And we'll open up council time for Wednesday, January the 23rd. And I would entertain a motion for the minutes of the June 16th meeting.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Ousted. Motion passes. Moving on to item 1.2 Charter Amendment Overview Ordinance, excuse me. Is that Lindsey?
Yes. Good morning, Council. Can you hear me okay? I'm on a new setup here in the office, so I'm making sure everything's working all right. So the Charter Amendment Ordinance that you have before you, this, we talked about at council time recently, what's before you is just a slightly modified version, not substantively. The PA's office and Kathleen and I have gone through this and just made some tweaks and wanted to confirm publicly with the council that you're ready to move forward with the two separate ordinances. I believe Taylor talked to you last time about separating them into two for the single subject rule. And so wanted to confirm that you are ready to go with these and wanted to schedule them on for the July 20th hearing. And if so, we'll go ahead and get the notice and everything done.
Could you enlighten us as to what those tweaks are, Lindsey?
Sure. So, for example, one of the provisions towards the bottom of the document pertains to the effective, the effective date, and so there's some minor changes regarding the, the language to clarify that as soon as passage, it will be incorporated into the Home Rule Charter. One of the other changes that was made is one of the sections that was included didn't include any changes. And under legislative drafting parameters, if there's a section of code that's not being changed, you don't include it in the draft. So that was taken out. The final change that was done was a language clarification. There were some parts of it that said if the code pertains only to the unincorporated area or would apply to the only the unincorporated area, we changed it consistently to say exclusively applies within the unincorporated area to keep that language consistent throughout the document.
Okay. Are there questions on the council?
I would just first like to say it's great to see you, Lindsey. I'm hopeful that we can all see each other in person soon. I don't have any questions. I think this is an important amendment. And I appreciate our auditor bringing it forward. And I'm hopeful that we have unanimity because it'll achieve more fairness in our democratic processes, especially with initiatives and referendums in this county. It was just really an oversight of unintended consequences when the charter was initially overly simplistically created. Other counties have recognized this deficiency and corrected it with similar ordinance changes or amendments to their charter, rather. So I fully support it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other comments or questions? It is good to see you, Lindsey. If not, do we have the consent of the council to move forward to a hearing on July 20th? Without. Okay.
Nods and thumbs up, so.
All right. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Sorry, if you don't mind, and it doesn't pertain to this specific ordinance or this specific, we have another one as well, right, that we're considering? Do we know the cost of putting these on the ballot? I know there's some costs associated with this. I'm just wondering if we know what that is, Lindsey. Do you know?
We don't have an exact amount because technically until the August, and I'll need to look at the exact date, until that early August deadline, we don't know exactly how many things are going to go on the ballot. For example, as you know, the Charter Review Commission is looking and they may have a number of potential amendments that they're proposing. So because the cost of the ballot determine, the number of items determines how big the paper is. And then the cost of it is borne, it's split up pro rata based on the number of items. So until that August date, we won't know exactly, but I'll reach out to elections and kind of get an estimate.
Okay, I just, but I think you reaffirmed what I remembered is that the more items on the ballot, the less expensive per item it is to, to include it. So that, so thank you for that.
Any other comments on the council? Just to that comment, I would say this is worth whatever it costs to put it on.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't disagree. And that wasn't the, that wasn't the angle of my question, but I agree with you completely.
Madam Chair, I had asked the same question of Greg when I met with him to first discuss this proposal and the other as well. We kind of were addressing both at the same time. And he gave exactly the same answer that Lindsey did. And my recollection is it's somewhere in the ballpark, there's a range, but about 35 to 55,000, something in that ballpark, I think, we'll, we'll ultimately find.
Other comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lindsey. Moving on to item number 1.3 District Court Judge Recruitment. Are you taking that?
Morning, Council. So I did send out some potential recruitment options for the two vacant district court judges. Those have actually changed a little bit. I talked to the district court administrator this morning. And based on just some feedback and our conversation, I would be recommending that we combine these two so that you're doing one interview to fill two positions. For a couple of reasons, we want to maintain the integrity of the process. So I know interviews are typically done in the public, so directly somebody could actually apply for the second judge, watch the interviews and know what the interview questions are. So that's one recommendation. The interviews would be held in mid to late July to allow for the second recruitment process. The recruitment announcement is out. We will shorten that deadline, so it actually come in earlier than July 16th. And we'll talk to the Bar Association to get an updated preference poll for the council. And then the other mention I would like, or request I would have is that the district court judges have an opportunity through their discussions and review that they collaborate, discuss the candidates, and then they can provide feedback to you in executive session actually to talk about the qualifications of the candidates as part of your deliberation and discussion. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions. We got the retirement letter, I think, last week. So that's why we're trying to combine the two so that you're going through the process one time and also preserve that integrity of the process.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Counselor Mevage.
So I, I support what you're generally laying out here. My one concern is this. You know, we had one judge who basically was off the bench for quite some time. And then the other vacancy came up. We're also experiencing because of the recent decision at, at the Supreme Court, a huge backlog of drug-related cases to come before the court. And then on top of that, we obviously had a huge traffic jam because of, of the pandemic. So what I'm, I guess the question I've got is by combining the two recruitments into one process, are we delaying the first one that's already been advertised? Because I wouldn't, yeah, go ahead.
It would only be delayed for approximately two weeks. And this, and this is a preference of the court as well. Because right now, the interviews were not scheduled until Tuesday, June 29th, as the second day of interviews, and that doesn't include if the council wanted to bring back anybody else for a second interview. So this would only delay that decision by two weeks.
Okay, and thank you. And thank you for, the other comment was whether or not that presiding judges had weighed in and, and it sounds like they did, and this is their preferred process as well. So thank you for that.
Other questions of the council? I don't see any. So, thank you, Kathleen. We'll move on to item 1.4 Body Cameras.
Thank you, Council. And I do have Mark Gasway on here as well. But I would like to go over some information that I had sent to the council over the weekend. Just going over a general fund, I'll do a summary by department, the tax levy options, mandatory versus non-mandatory services, and then potential next steps. You go a couple more slides, I'm on the yellow. So this first slide is just the general fund by department. In 2021, the adopted expense budget for the general fund is just over $186 million. Over 135 million, or about 73% of the general fund, is currently funding law and justice in Clark County. That includes the sheriff's office, district court, prosecuting attorney, clerk, juvenile, and superior court. A couple notable items on this slide, and those that are law and justice are highlighted in yellow on this slide. There is a transfer and pass-through, which is a second item on here. So this is categorized by the current budget by department and the percentage that they have for general funds. So for example, as you can see, sheriff's office has about $66 million of the current general fund, which is about 35% of the total general fund budget. The transfers and pass-throughs include items such as election funds, planning and code, county road fund, the VA fund, crime victims, and others. So this is literally just a pass-through to general fund to other supporting services. CJC, the Law Library, Victim, Witness, and the LEAF Retirement equates to about just over a million dollars, and that's also in the law and justice expenses. You'll see on here, the railroad has a line item. I just want to call that out specifically because this is for capital projects and it has restricted funding resources. What I was told is it's put here because we don't have a separate fund set up for it. So that amount, that's about 5.8 million, cannot be used for other general fund purposes. And then finally, IT, HR, Budget, Auditor, Treasurer, Internal Services, the Council County Manager Office, the Civil, PA, they all have cost allocations that go towards law and justice as well. And that equates about 13.4 million. So that is included in the total law and justice general fund portion of the 135 million. And those cost allocations are determined annually based on the prior year actual amounts required by federal grant requirements. And I believe those allocations are done through the auditor's office. So the next item is just some, so we're talking about not the purchase of body cameras. This is the ongoing support to pay for supporting body cameras. So the next item is, there's four tax and levy options. The first one is the exercise or excess levies, this is operations and maintenance. This is approximately 700,000 per year. It's the 1% property tax. This decision is a council decision, and this funding may be used for any lawful government purposes. The second item is juvenile detention facility and jail sales tax. This would equate to approximately 6 million per year. It's 0.1% of the sales tax. This is countywide. This is a council decision because we have less than 1 million required. For populations of more than a million, it requires a voter approval. Since we're just over 500,000, this is a tax that the council can determine. This tax may be used for any juvenile detention facilities and jails. So with that said, what that does is free up that general fund that's supporting that to then be reallocated to the body cameras. And this is applicable to the sheriff's office and prosecuting attorney's office as well. The third item is the public safety sales tax. This has a couple of options. It's 0.1% would bring in about the 6 million dollars. 0.2% would do an additional 6 million for a total of 12. And option three is 0.3% of sales tax, which adds another 6 million. So the total would be approximately 18 million. The cities do have an option to also take a share of this. If they were to enact that, it would increase their budget by 3 million and reduce our portion by 3 million. This is also applicable to the sheriff's office and prosecuting, I think that's, yeah, prosecuting attorney's office. And finally, the fourth option is bank capacity. And I just wanted to pull it out there that this is an option, but it's not an option at this time. Because the council chose, the council chose to use the general fund bank capacity as part of the 2020 annual budget adoption. So at this time, there is no funds available to be allocated to the body cameras. So I did, in my attachments, and we're not going to pull them up, but I did send different services that are required. One that's mandated by federal or state law. I have a spreadsheet that shows mandated services that are from inter-local agreements or Clark County code, and then non-mandated services. This report came from the budget office that we received in the end of February of 2019. So the data is a little outdated at this point. It was part of the program budgeting process that we will continue and pick back up in 2022 as part of the 2023 annual budget development. This information is raw data, has not been validated by budget staff. So this is based on departments' interpretation on whether or not there is a mandated service required. During a normal program-based budgeting, there would be a peer review and, and ranking and conversation that would actually determine that service level. Currently, there are over 700 programs that are identified in the budget process. And as I mentioned, this program will continue to develop in 2022 as part of the 2023 annual budget. We did put a link on here as well, if the council's interested on, especially for new councils, if you want to go back and look at what that process was looking like. So for possible next steps, and I didn't put this on there, but of course, it's definitely an option. If there's more information that council would like staff to research and bring back, we can certainly do that. For the tax levy options, you can enact on options that are under your purview. For the voter options, the council can choose to put something on the ballot that's required by the statutes that we actually have to get voter approval. You can also do a voter informational vote on items under your purview. If, as with the other items that you have been discussing on the ballot, if you want to go on the November ballot, we do have to have that information to the auditor's office no later than August 3rd. If the council wants to look at general fund and trying to find additional funding or reductions in departments to help support the ongoing body cameras, I would be recommending that we have a work session next week to include the other elected officials and department heads so that they can clearly identify how that's going to impact their services in their department and in the community. I think it's best if, you know, they can share that because while we can actually reduce all over, but what's an acceptable level of service under a mandated service? And I think it's important for you all to hear directly from the folks who are managing those. So that's all the information I have today. I'm more than happy to answer questions. I know Mark Gasaway is on today as well, if there's any other specific questions. And looking for some feedback, questions, and possible next steps.
Are there questions on the council?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Bowles.
If we were to want to commit, but simply investigate a reduction in the general fund, is that a decision that should be made today in order to get the scheduling done as you've outlined?
My apologies, Counselor. I didn't, you were breaking up in the first part of your question, so could you please repeat it?
Yes, let me stop the video. I've been having trouble hearing others as well. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I was wondering if we wanted to investigate, not commit to, but simply investigate a reduction in the general fund, if that would be something that we should state today so that this.
Yes, I think, I'm going to repeat that, the question to make sure I've got it. I understand you're asking if you want, if the council wants to have a reduction in general fund, do we need to make that decision today? Is that accurate?
Outlawed. Well, almost. If we wanted to.
I can't tell. He said, I'm going to assume that that was accurate. So I would say yes, if the council wants to look at general fund reductions, I would ask that we make that decision today. And next, like I said, next Wednesday, I would schedule a work session so that departments can speak directly to the council on how that would impact their services.
Other questions of council?
And I guess, Madam Chair, and conversely, if we wanted to consider any of the other options, we would probably, given the tight timeframe that we have, if we need a public hearing, that, that would, that would also kind of fall into what we probably want to do today. If we wanted to consider any of these options, we probably want to provide some direction today. Is that what we're being asked, considering our tight timeline?
I think so. That's, that's what I heard, that we really need to give steps, so.
So I have not received confirmation yet. We may not have to have a public hearing on this. I'm asking that question of legal. If we do have to have a public hearing, we'll have to have that by July 20th.
Madam Chair, I think if we are going to put it on the ballot, we probably have to have a public hearing. If we're going to, we're going to have an ordinance with a 1/10th of 1% property tax or a sales tax, I would think we would have to do that in a public hearing in order to get it on the ballot. So I think, given our, for me, given our timeline, the process of going through general fund reductions, I think would be a healthy one. I don't know that we have enough time to really make those really, really difficult decisions and also try to get something on the ballot if that's not the direction that we go. So I think that body cameras are something that this community would support, and funding for them would be something they would support. So, so if we were able to put, you know, put the public safety 1/10th of 1% on the ballot and get our community involved and get their feedback, that would be a direction that I would support.
Madam Chair, if I might, so thank you. Obviously, I've been supporting the body cams and dash cams all along and really see it as an absolute necessity. I have been interested in looking at efficiencies in our general fund for any, any funds that could be cut to pay for the ongoing costs. I'm still hopeful that some of the pandemic money that's coming our way, since law enforcement's so directly impacted by the pandemic, will at least pay for all of the initial outlay. I am not interested at all in raising taxes, except I support what Counselor Olson just supported. If, because I do believe the public would support this and be willing to chip in a little bit more on their sales tax to support the ongoing costs, I would like to see it go on the ballot and put to the voters to decide. So that would be, my impetus would be to look at general fund possibilities. You know, basically a zero-sum game as far as moving funds from one area to another. But I, I would also want to pursue and make sure we do it in a timely way. Get it onto the ballot for the, let the voters decide. So that would be my, my position.
Chair.
Counselor Lance.
I am, I am not in favor of pursuing general fund reductions for, for this item. I think that we've already heard at great length over the last couple of years about the state of our general fund. And while looking for opportunities to reduce and create more efficiencies is definitely an exercise we should go through. I think that we're probably going to be going through that with the regular budgeting process to try to find the money to fund our government. I think that the community would and does support this. The sheriff's office has asked for it. I think that putting the, the 10th of a percent on the ballot is a, is a good course for this. And that, then that money could be directly dedicated and would not impact the rest of the general fund. I think since the sheriff's office, law and justice is a majority of our general fund as it is. And to date, we have not seen many reductions come from them and no proposed reductions when they made this budget request. I would be uncomfortable with taking from the rest of the county's departments in order to fund this. However, I think that we should go to the voters to get their approval and move forward in that way. And I support the 1/10th of 1% because it is about, the, the $3 million that we would likely end up with is, is more in line with, with the amount that we would end up needing than say the, the six for, for the other item. So I think this is, this is reasonable and keeps it as low as possible.
And my, my viewpoint is that it's always good to look at opportunities to reduce, you know, costs at the county. I do know that our general fund really suffers. However, I think it's good for the public to actually hear what these mandated responsibilities are for different, for different departments in the county government. And, and I think that's pretty, probably pretty readily available to each of those departments. So I think that we should have a simultaneous hearing going on Wednesday. We could hear from other electeds about the various issues within their budgets that are under the general fund and also are mandated. And at the same time, go forward with, if it's necessary, the hearing to place this 1/10th of 1% ordinance on the ballot for voters to vote on. If the public does indeed support it, they, they'll show us that through their vote. And, and I think that it's prudent for us to do so. I'm in favor of body worn cameras as well. I just want to be sure that we're reading the community correctly by assuming that they would like that as well. So that's, it seems to me that we have three counselors that would actually like to at least take a look at the general fund and have those folks come before us and tell us what their mandated things are and if and how they would make cuts. So that the public, even more the public than us, because we do hear about it almost, you know, monthly, if not weekly, that we, that we do have a structured deficit in our budget. That said, I think that gives you some direction, does it not, Kathleen?
Yes, we'll go ahead and draft the 0.1% public safety tax information. And we'll bring that back to you guys for review next week. And I will talk to electeds and I would also invite other departments as well and have them be prepared to talk about their mandated services and what a reduction would do directly with those services. So we will get that scheduled.
Okay, thank you very much. So thank you for all of the work that you've done on this, to, to look into this, funding this.
Yeah, and I can just confirm from Counselor Mevage's comments. I do believe that the federal funding that we're receiving for COVID can be used for purchase of body cameras. It is not an ongoing funding source though, but for the initial purchase. And next Wednesday is the work session, I believe, with the auditor's office, Mark Gasaway and Laura, I believe is her name. And they'll be going over requests regarding that specific funding next week as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Next, we go to new business and regarding council meetings. Are you going to cover that, Kathleen?
Yes, I am. Thank you. So I know it was brought up a little bit this morning in the public health meeting, but the governor did make a public statement a while ago about lifting the emergency declaration and restrictions on. about lifting the emergency declaration and restrictions on, on our business. And Dr. Melick also did mention about LNI that he is hearing that that guidance is still going to be in effect, which is that masks must be worn if you're not vaccinated and you can take it off in the building if you have been vaccinated. So looking at options moving forward with regards to council meetings, we have our Tuesday, I split these up between the meetings that allow for public testimony versus those that are really internal discussions. So the top part of this document shows for council meetings and Board of Health and what your options are. I can tell you from talking with the other cities, a lot of them are looking at a hybrid approach on these with regards to public testimony and also still maintaining social distancing. So for council meetings and Board of Health, the council options, you can all return in person and continue your meetings that way. You can still continue to remote in through WebEx or there could be a hybrid where some of you can come in if you choose and if others want to still continue on WebEx, that's also an option. For staff options, and these are options for staff who would be presenting, it's the same thing. They can come in and present in person. They can present remotely like they've been doing through WebEx or a hybrid based on individual preference. And I can tell you for some of the cities, they're going to continue staff doing remote presentations to, at council meetings. And then for our public, we can allow all the public to attend in person. We can allow the public to attend but still maintain some social distancing in the hearing room, which we would like to take, move chairs around or put like X's on chairs that can't be sat in. We can provide public testimony, only those individuals who'll be providing testimony to come into the hearing room. And with that said, we would have another room set up where the rest of the public can come in and watch and engage because the OPMA would be in effect. And so we need to make sure that they have an opportunity to have access to the hearings. Or we can do, also continue doing a hybrid approach with these meetings. You can continue to use WebEx and that is another avenue for some community members if they prefer to continue that way, to provide testimony online and have our meetings on those, on there as well. Or they can watch remotely like they do now with CVTV and WebEx. So if we want, I don't know if you want to discuss these options or, you know, I would, personally, I think I would recommend a hybrid approach just to make sure that, you know, everybody is comfortable with how we're coming into the office with regards to the council, but, you know, and leave it up to individual counselors. But I certainly, you know, would respect your decision on how you want to move forward with those two hearings.
I'd open this up for discussion with council.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I really, I really support the idea, can you hear me by the way?
Yes.
I really, I really support the idea of the hybrid approach. There are still individuals who, for various reasons, cannot participate in the group setting and the hybrid approach still allows them to participate fully if need be. But it is important that we be able to move back to the in-person as we can and the hybrid allows that as well. So I think that's a great approach for us to take.
Other comments?
Madam Chair, if I may. So obviously, all of the work, places of work in the private sector are going to be informed by what's transpired the past year and what makes the most sense for individual businesses for remote working. You know, on the RTC and the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board, we've specifically discussed this as well, looking into the future, even post-pandemic as providing greater frequency. I'm not advocating that our local board ultimately remain hybrid, but I think we're still in the pandemic and there's still a lot of concern about it. So I absolutely support, at least in the conditions we're under right now, a hybrid approach that we can revisit in the future once we really, everyone feels comfortable about meeting in, in person.
Other counselors? Are we going to have any, I guess my question would be, with the hybrid, are we going to have parameters around that for, for instance, counselors? We just going to have people decide they're going to show up or not show up or? I support a hybrid if it's necessary and I believe it is. So, but I'd like to have some parameters around that. It's just, we can't make it in or we have a reason that we cannot be in a group setting? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't want to get into being vaccinated or unvaccinated or showing documentation for our need to be remote. I think, you know, what we've been doing on those other committees is just notifying what our intent was, whether to be there in person or to be there remotely. I, I would, during this time period, ask for the most flexibility in this. I think just some prior coordination so the manager knows, so the chair knows who will be in person.
As we've heard, go ahead.
Sorry, Kathleen, so, so given LNI guidance, whether it's council or staff or public, and we're not going to, we have to, we have to manage through LNI guidance in terms of masks and not masks and again, whether it's staff or council or public, right? So that's going to be somehow part of the-
Yeah, so for staff, anybody who's on our payroll, which I would believe is also inclusive of our council, and we have a system set up in Workday where you can submit and, and attest that you've received your vaccination or you can take a picture of your vaccination and put it in, and there's a log box in front of HR because we are required by LNI to be able to provide a report from employees if asked of who has been vaccinated and therefore can take your mask off. If you have not been vaccinated, you need to wear a mask in-house. With regards to the public, we're also required to put signage at all of our entrances, which we have, notifying the public that if you're vaccinated, you can remove your mask. If you're not vaccinated, you need to keep your mask on while, while in the building. But for employers or employees, we have to maintain a record in the event that LNI, because it's a requirement from LNI. And we can be fined if we're not following the LNI guidelines.
So I'm supportive of a, I'm supportive of a hybrid option with, as Counselor Mevage says, as much lenience as we, as we can and flexibility in terms of coming into or not coming into meetings so that we do make sure that, that staff is prepared for whichever we choose and whichever staff chooses, but that that decision can be made individually. And that then, once that decision is made and disseminated to the public and for all of our reference, that the, the guidance and requirements are clear and are, and are clearly, clearly posted and stated so that we know constantly and we're, we're clear on what the masking and distancing, et cetera, is, is required of folks when they are in the building.
So what we can do with the hybrid approach for the council is we can just continue to send out the invite and so it's on your calendar. So if you choose to do it from your remote location, you have, you automatically have that access. So we're not having to manage who do we need to send it to next week. It will just be on your, your meeting invite and we'll, you know, if you can communicate with us, that'd be great, you know, if you're going to be in or online just so that we make sure we're connecting with you the appropriate way.
Madam Chair, so, so if we move down then to the public options, we heard quite a bit about this this morning. Kathleen, can you, can we talk about this hybrid of a public option, of the public participation piece? I'm trying to get a clear idea on that or, or if they come to the hearing room or, yeah, I don't know.
Right, so if you don't, if you want to, you have the option to allow them fully in the room and they all have the, the recommendation or the requirement as well if they're vaccinated or not vaccinated with regards to masks. You can also let them in the room, all in the same room, in the hearing room and require six-foot distancing. That's another option. For the other hybrid piece is that you could actually have people sign up for public testimony ahead of time and then they would be allowed in the hearing room to provide public testimony. And then we would find a second location, which I would assume would be in the room where work sessions used to be, since there's access there for CVTV and a screen for them to watch. So you can do it that way, that only those who are providing public testimony would be in the hearing room and then everybody else who wanted to attend in person would be in a separate room.
Talking like putting up that flexible wall, for instance, and having people behind that flexible wall that are attending and those that are, to speak or could, actually, I, I would hope that we have the ability to allow people to sign up to speak while they are in that back room or whatever other room so that they can come into the room where people are actually personally speaking. Is, is that how you intend to do it? Is it going to be nearby?
Yes, yes. I, I know it's been a while since we've been together. But it was, we have the ability in the, the conference room right next to the council hearing room. It's where you have work sessions before. So it's, it's the overflow room that we can use for hearings. So that, those doors are already in place. So we can have those who want to come in and watch but not provide public testimony to be in that room and then those who are providing public testimony to be in the hearing room. And then there's also the option, if you want to continue, to allow public testimony through WebEx because that is a different communication channel that we didn't have before, but that is also something we can continue to do.
Madam Chair, why, why, I don't understand the public hybrid model, really. It seems to me we would do either one or the top two for the public, either allow them to come in or do it with six-foot distancing. I don't know how many people would want to come in, but then they're, then they, you know, they are able to provide their public testimony as they normally would. I don't know the advantage really to doing, to breaking them up into separate rooms and having some in the hearing room and some in the other room watching. I don't really understand the advantage of that piece. So it seems to me we would go with either one or the top two, just let them come to the meeting.
Yeah, I believe that when the other jurisdictions were talking about this, it was just reducing the number of people who are going to be in the main room, but still providing that public access. But yes, you can certainly do the first two bullet points of bringing everybody into the main hearing room or doing that with some distancing.
Can we retain the, can we have them come in public to testify and also retain being able to testify over WebEx? That if they're not comfortable coming in person, we can still hear from them and, okay, great. I'd be in favor of, of doing that, that I think that it would be good to open up and allow the public. I would, I would suggest though, with six-foot distancing, at least to start and, but also making sure that we maintain the, the remote testimony as well.
And I would think actually that separating of people who aren't going to testify being in that large conference room, really, it seems to me that more, more often than not, there's a larger audience than those that testify. So I think we'd need a bigger room. So I would agree that if we need to have distancing, we should do that at first and allow everybody to, to come into one room, but also allow for remote testimony by WebEx. Other comments? And you agree? Okay, so do you understand, Kathleen, about what we seem to have kind of moved forward with here?
I do. I'll just recap it for counselors. We'll be sending out the WebEx as we have been and as soon as the governor releases all this, because we're still into the OPMA stuff, counselors can come in or join remotely. The public will open up the hearing room, will do social distancing with the chairs and will also continue remote opportunities for public testimony as well. And that, we'll do the same for the work sessions as well. There's just no public testimony at work sessions. But we'll, we can actually do the work sessions in the hearing room to continue to allow people to come in and watch and still have social distancing. If that sounds okay, we'll just apply that same logic for the work, work sessions. And then also hybrid approach with the staff who's presenting, whether they want to come into the hearing room or do it remotely as well. Is there anything I missed or that doesn't make sense?
What you said makes sense. Are we, are we in a council?
Yeah, I see this as just a step forward to opening it up to the public, which we must and should do. And if we need to adjust to circumstances or how it works out, we can revisit the issue. And I would expect that we would continuously until we're completely back to normal.
Thank you. We will get this solidified and we'll have something ready too for when the governor loosens up and reopens things so that we can get the information out to the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to counselor reports.
Madam Chair? Counselor, just two things. One, you and I had a conversation, I don't know, a month or so ago when we were talking about the charter amendments and I just wanted to put out possibly to the council the opportunity or at least the opportunity to discuss an advisory vote. Our email boxes are now starting to fill up with regard to fireworks. But I got to thinking again more about it and one of the things the advisory vote could do or would do is allow the other jurisdictions, the cities, smaller cities in the county, to also get data on how the communities feel about fireworks. And I think just generally it would provide all of us just an opportunity to see where we are right now on this topic. We know where we are individually here on the council, obviously, but I think it's been since 2013 that the last advisory vote was done. So the community's changed and, and it's, as we know, a very passionate issue. But I think it would just give us and our, and our smaller cities a data point that they could refer to as they grapple with this difficult topic as well. And, and considering, the reason I asked the question earlier was considering the number of items that it looked like are going to be on the ballot in November, that the cost of putting this on the ballot would be less than it might have been when we talked about it in February. So, so anyway, I'd just like to put that out for consideration if, if the council would consider putting out an advisory vote on the ballot in November for the fireworks topic. And we can talk, we can talk about the language if it's something that is acceptable. You don't have to decide that today, but, and, and so that's one. And then the other one is, I did get out to the Ridgefield pod last week when they were giving vaccinations and was able to thank the volunteers that were there. And just from an anecdotal standpoint, when I left, when, when the, when it opened, the line was out the door and around the building with kids and their parents giving vaccines. So the volunteers have been doing this all these numbers of months. It was nice to get to say thank you to them for, for all their efforts. So that's it for me, but would love the opportunity to have a conversation about an advisory vote.
I think probably we should have that discussion at another council time and not during counselor reports, but we can all think about that unless you have comments at this time. But we can all think about that unless you have comments at this time.
I would respond. So I, I've always been against an advisory vote, not only because of the cost, but basically just because it was non-binding. And also, I, when talking to our auditor, he basically doesn't support advisory votes either. He didn't have an update on what's happening with either possible referendum on the same subject right now. And I don't know if that timeline has come and gone and they're, they're both dead or one of them's proceeding. So I'm concerned right now about the timing and the fact that we are putting ostensibly two amendments forward on our charter and we don't yet know what the charter committee is going to do. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of an advisory vote right now. I'm really, at this time and, and seeing all these emails come in, and there aren't that many, but there are, they're just starting. I'd like to know what the fire marshal is going to do this year. You know, with, with the exceedingly and increasingly exceedingly dry conditions. You know, ultimately, I see the fire marshal as having an absolute key role in what, what's going to happen, at least for the Fourth of July. So anyway, those are, those are my thoughts. I don't know if anyone has any updated information on either of the referendums that were noticed because the last I talked to Greg Kimsey, he, he didn't have an update on whether the signatures were gathered or not.
It's my understanding that they're all dead.
Okay, I do think the suggestion about hearing from the fire marshal and what he might do this year is really important. And maybe we should ask him to join us for council time on, on the 30th next week. I think that would be good because I understand we're going to have, at least this is what I heard, that on Sunday, we're going to like have 108 degrees. That's pretty hot and dry for the Pacific Northwest. So, you know, he has the authority to actually, you know, send out, send out an edict on this and, and maybe not even allow it at all. So it would be good to hear from our fire marshal. And maybe we can invite him to do that next Wednesday at council time. So thank you, Counselor Medvedje, for that. Other comments?
Yes, Chair. I would support both having the fire marshal and come and talk about the authority next week and the situation. And I would support either, I would just directly support a deeper conversation about, about an advisory vote. Or if we need to move this to next council time, might be a second vote for getting it onto the agenda for next week. But in general, I think that, as Counselor Olson said, we know where we individually stand. And we know that the last time we talked about this, the, the public was quite split. And so going out to take the temperature, so to speak, directly and hearing directly from the voters is a value that I believe we all share. And so I think that would be a, a good thing for us to do.
While I'm not opposed to advisory votes, I actually generally think that they, they inform us, you know, of various things that the community is thinking. Maybe even more so than, for instance, town halls or anything, because everybody has a chance then to make a comment. However, this particular ballot in November, I think it will very possibly be quite full. And so I'm not sure it would be appropriate for this particular ballot. If we have charter amendments, we have two of them that we're putting on. I'm not sure that we have any others. You know, some things come up even with this redistricting committee that's being formed that might need some tweaking. But we also don't know 100% yet what the, the charter commission is going to put on the ballot. So it may be not a very prudent time to be doing it because there, there will be too many decisions for voters. And I actually believe that that, when you mount up the ballot with all kinds of measures, we end up really losing the attention of many voters. So, and not getting really full understanding and, and really opinion of all of the voters. So I wouldn't support it, but, but we could discuss it further. And I would support discussing it further at our next board time. Well, I just want the council wants to do.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I, I don't know that if there's no, if there's no appetite for the majority to move forward. I actually think number ballot items can, can increase voter turnout. I, I don't want to waste anybody else's time on this topic if, if there's not an inkling that we might be able to have a productive conversation and move it forward. Again, we all know where we stand. I would just, I think, I think putting it out to the public to provide feedback for us is important. And I think that because we have enough items on the ballot in November, the cost is less. And I do think we might get better voter turnout on it. So, so again, if there's, if there's opportunity for some discussion to move forward, that's great. I would welcome that if it, but I don't want to do it. I don't want to waste time if, if there's not a reasonable chance of moving forward with it, so.
Okay, I guess we can. I guess we need one more opinion there to see whether we want to actually have, have the subject come up on council time.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Bowerman.
I would also. Or idea that if the option that we do it at a later time. I think that is, there's a lot of advisability in that so that voters aren't confused and they tend, it tends to be confusing on a ballot that is putting out options that are simply advisory in nature and not an actual vote. So with less opportunity to really discuss and explain that, I think it would be better put off into the future for when such a vote would be needed.
Okay, other counselor reports?
Oh, yes, Chair. I'll, yesterday, Counselor Bowerman and I, and I'm not going to speak for you counselors, but I'll just say that we were both there. We attended a meeting of the advisory group working with WSU Extension on the Heritage Farm Business Plan element that this council requested. So a group from the WSU Metropolitan Center has been enlisted to help with the business plan and facilitate those discussions and get them moving. So we had a lot of folks with some good expertise. We had someone to talk about how, someone from Mount Vernon, talking about how their, their operation works. And we, we started to talk about vision from the different entities there. And we are not, we're not there yet, but it was a good, a good start of a discussion.
Other counselor reports? If not, we'll move into work session requests.
Yes, the first work session request is from Public Health and it's to review the 2022 environmental public health fees. This is an annual conversation that Public Health has with the council. They're looking at specifically drinking water and onsite subject permitting programs. You will be receiving information and having conversations individually prior to the work session. And Public Health is looking for some direction at that time for Public Health so that they can recommend and present a balanced budget for 2022.
Without objection, we will, here, we'll have that work session. Next.
The next item, and I know Ahmad is on as well. This is a work session request for July regarding the Cedars Golf Course acquisition alternatives. And the, there's been conversations with Cedars Golf Course as the owner. They reached out to the county in late 2019 to discuss potential interest in selling their property to the county. So this would just be as a follow-up to that conversations and others regarding options for the council for moving forward with Cedars Golf Course.
Without objection, we will have that work session as well. Okay, we are going to go into executive session. We have one potential litigation under RCW 42.30.110.1I. For 15 minutes, legal counsel will be in attendance. And I don't believe there's action afterwards. Is that correct, Kathleen?
That is correct. There's no action and an attorney will be present.
Yeah, okay, so we will adjourn this meeting and go to our executive session meeting. Thank you all, we're adjourned.